Hey, good morning and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. Number fourteen, twenty twenty. We'll start with vote call. Can you hear me okay?
It was.
You ready?
I'm ready.
McGowan, right? Here. Millies?
Here.
Elliot?
Here.
Diaz?
Here.
Whitlock?
Here.
Pearson?
Here.
Aguilar?
Please stand and join me in our flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now is the public comment time. At this time, members of public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to participate, public comment via telephone, please call five-five-nine-six-two-four-seven-zero-one-three, and you will be connected to the boardroom addressing the Planning Commission the same manner as if you were here in person. Please state your name and address for the record in order to be heard by everyone in the room. Your statements will go out live audio and be included in the audio recording of the meeting. The meeting can be viewed at Planning Commission Meeting, Tolaria County, main page. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited at the time of the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak. Any person addressing Planning Commission may be addressed by the chair. That's me. Note, in order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony of public hearing items must be given at the time of the public hearing is scheduled. As courtesy to those of attendance, please turn off and place your alert modes on your cell phones in Compliance American Disability Act. If you need special assistance to participate, meaning please contact Resource Management, six-two-four-seven-zero. And I'm the worst one about the cell phones, so as you can see, I'm gonna turn mine off, so. Is there anyone liking to address the Planning Commission on any item that's not on our agenda? Seeing none, I will close the public comment and look for a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second? Yes, okay, yes, okay. Motion carried. We're moving on to the consent calendar. Actions on all items of this section will be taken with one motion and vote unless anyone wishing to discuss any one of these items requests that it be pulled from the consent calendar and held over for discussion. Seeing that there's only one, consent calendar is an untimed item and may be taken up any time during today's meeting. So after all this time, is, there's no staff report. Is there anyone wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion and ask for a vote on this, please. Someone make a motion?
Wayne Millies, I'll move that we approve the resolution of the Planning Commission of the County of Tolaria, two-year extension of time for tentative parcel map, PPM eighteen dash zero-three-two, to September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second.
Motion carried. Item five, public hearing. To members of the public, if you wish to participate in today's public hearing via telephone, please call five-five-nine-six-two-four-seven-zero-one-three, and you will be connected to the boardroom to address the Planning Commission the same manner as if you were here in person. Please state your name and address for the record in order to stream. I said, please, please state your name and address for the record in order to be heard by everyone in the room. Your statement will go out live audio stream will be included in the audio recording of the meeting. The timer will be set to three minutes, so please adhere to the time limit. If you choose not to call in, you may participate by submitting an email as this item is being heard. Email should be include Senator's name, address for the record. Email should include the following subject, agenda number, and can be sent to the clerk of the Planning Commission at all lowercase, planningcommission@co.tolaria.ca.us. Every effort will be made to read your comments into the records, but some comments may not be read due to time limitations. Comments received after the public hearing has closed will be made part of the record. If received before the end of the meeting, that concludes the instructions on today's public hearing. So we go to item five A, and that's a special use permit, PSP two-zero-dash-zero-three-eight. Okay, good morning.
Chairman, members of the commission, if I may extend for a quick item for your consideration is special use permit number PSP twenty-dash-zero-three-eight, and the applicant is Samuel Franco Delgado. Yeah? Give us a second so we can get the slideshow up on the screen. The application is a proposal to allow a third residence in the rural residential special mobile home zone, and that residence would be standard-built and would be occupied by a member of the applicant's family. Again, the applicant is Samuel Franco Delgado. The location is at one-two-five-five-seven Avenue three-twenty-two Visalia, on the south side of Avenue three-twenty-two, approximately nine-hundred-and-thirty-seven feet east of State Route sixty-three, also known as Road one-twenty-four. It's just north of the city of Visalia. On October fifth, I received a phone call from Rosemary Taylor, and she stated that she was opposed to the project because the applicant was not properly maintaining their property. Mrs. Taylor was concerned about a woodpile with termites that was up against her fence. And her property is located just to the south of the project site. And if you look at the screen right now, the project site is surrounded with the dark, bold border, and Mrs. Taylor's property is the one where the cursor is moving. Public hearing notice for this project was both published in the Sun Gazette and mailed on September thirtieth of two thousand twenty, and the map shows the project site and all of the parcels that were mailed with public hearing notice. Section sixteen of the Tolaria County zoning ordinance allows the establishment of a third residence in the rural residential zone with an approved special use permit. The next diagram is showing the vicinity map. Again, the property is located at one-two-five-five-seven Avenue three-twenty-two, on the south side of Avenue three-twenty-two, approximately nine-hundred-and-thirty-seven feet east of State Route sixty-three, and approximately half a mile north of the city of Visalia. The project site is located inside the Visalia urban area boundary and is within the Patterson Tract urban development boundary. On the screen now is an aerial image for the property. The site contains two existing residences, accessory structures, which consist of two shops and one barn. Also, there are two existing septic systems and an existing domestic well. Concerning general plan consistency, again, the site is located within the Visalia urban area boundary and is within the Patterson Tract urban development boundary. The land use designation is rural residential, and the project is consistent with the relevant elements of the general plan, which include planning framework, policy, excuse me, planning frame, planning framework element policy PF one-point-two, land use element policy LU one-point-one-zero, agricultural element policy AD one-point-one-four, air quality element policy AQ four-point-two, environmental resources management element policies ERM one-point-one and ERM six-point-one, health and safety policies HS one-point-nine, HS six-point, six-point-five, HS six-point-seven, and HS eight-point-one-eight, and public facilities and service element policy PFS three-point-one. The existing zoning for the property is rural residential, special mobile home zone, and the diagram on the screen shows that the property site is completely surrounded by other properties within the same zone district. Section four-point-one of the Tolaria County zoning ordinance pertaining to the R A M zone allows by right one family dwellings of a permanent character and one-family manufactured homes installed on a foundation system. Section sixteen of the Tolaria County zoning ordinance allows the establishment of a third residence in the RA zone with an approved special use permit. The use permit complies with all zoning regulations applicable to the subject property. The diagram on the screen now is the site plan with a red border around the perimeter of the property. The two existing houses are labeled, and the proposed mobile home is proposed to be located generally in the northwest corner of the property, and other accessory structures are also labeled for the two shops and the barn. The Planning Commission staff is requesting that the commission approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the SEQA guidelines pursuant to section fifteen-three-oh-three, class-three, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally use, conditionally approved special use permit number PSP twenty-dash-zero-three-eight. This concludes the staff report unless there are any questions.
We have any questions? Otherwise, I'll open the
Just one
Public comment.
One quick question here. With this use permit, is there any way we can get any satisfaction for the neighbor that's being impacted with the termites or whatever? Can we control it over a livestock rule or something? You gotta control your livestock, right?
To the chair, I'm sure every one of us has a wood area, right?
Right. Right. Sandy is the applicant here today? I don't see them.
I don't know if the applicant is here. I had, you know, sent them an email with information in the packet, and they didn't respond and indicate whether or not they were gonna attend the meeting. Is Mr. Delgado in the audience?
Doesn't look like it. Plus Clint changed his name.
Can we put a motion, an adder to the approval that the applicant highly recommended by the commission that the applicant look at insect or whatever they call, what is, what is a
Holly needs to move it away from the fence and she'd be happy, so.
For the good, for the good of the neighborhood.
And I don't know if termites are in the typical definition of vectors, but again, if we make a finding that the Planning Commission strongly suggests to the owner that they remove that.
Let me open the public comment.
That should satisfy that.
We can add rules when we make, somebody makes a motion, Wayne. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I've got another question, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Sandy, could you put up the slide that had the proposed, it was an aerial with the, there you go. I see where that's proposed, what? Right along the neighbors to the, I guess would be to the west. What, is there a fence line there? Because they're gonna be right, by the time they get done there, they're gonna be right at the setbacks, and they're gonna be real close to the neighbor there, or a lot closer than what the neighbors had to deal with.
I really tell from the drawing what the dimensions are, so that could be fifty feet, so.
Well, when the building permit is submitted for construction of the new residence, it would have to meet the setback requirements of the zone district. And when I put the slide together, I did not, you know, have room to, you know, label, you know, the distance between the proposed mobile home and the property line.
This is a building department issue, and they're just saying approximately there, so they still have to submit a site plan for, to put it there, correct?
Yeah, they would have to submit a building permit application, which would need to include a site plan, and that site plan would need to demonstrate that they need all of the setback requirements. And then in addition to that, you know, they would have to meet all of the requirements of the building code, which would be, you know, part of the plan check process by the building division.
Are there other mobile homes in that area?
There are scattered residences, and, you know, I would expect that there's, you know, both stick-built homes and mobile homes, you know, out in the rural areas. You know, nothing is uniform as far as the construction.
The only thing I have to consider about the discussion of adding another septic system, work with all ones, and let me go ahead and do the picture later in the presentation that we got it.
But that also has to be run through the health department.
Yeah.
So, not an issue. We're just giving the right to do it. They still have to meet building department standards and the health department.
The health department did review and comment on the project, and that information is included in the packet. And on page eight of the packet, the environmental health service conditions are listed. And on number thirteen, they do note that the site contains two existing septic systems, and they state that the applicant may either A, utilize an existing septic system connection for the third residence, or B, abandoning, abandon one existing septic system and install a new system. For the second option, the new system would serve both the third residence and one of the existing residences, and shall be sized with enough capacity for serving both. And, you know, this condition required by the environmental health services, you know, is specific to a policy in the, a specific county policy. And also, their comments are attached. And their comment letter is on page twenty-four of the packet. That's where it starts, you know, and it lists the four conditions that they have. And then, you know, it has some other things that are attached to the letter, including a bacteriological water sample procedure and certification of existing subservice sewage disposal system, certification site plan, site evaluation reports, information about septic systems, qualified contractors. So all the information is in the packet.
Yes, to the chair, they do have an as-built example in there, and I think it answers both questions as far as the setbacks. They do show the hundred-foot distance between the well site and the proposed septic, and then you can see from the map at the scale, they're presenting the, the proposed house is set back pretty, pretty far from the the side road there, so I think that that does answer the questions generally.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. I will open the public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this item? And I'm gonna take a minute, in case, just in case somebody is listening, will take one minute to allow someone to call in, starting now. Hearing no additional public comment, I will close the public comment and move on to the Planning Commission for someone to make a motion to approve or disapprove.
I'll make the motion, Wayne Millies, to approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title fourteen California Code Regulation, section one-five-three-zero-one, pertaining to existing facilities and conditionally approved special use permit PSP two-zero-dash-zero-four-two with an additive, with a proviso that the Planning Commission strongly suggests that the applicant provide adequate pest parentheses, termites abatement, or move the pile to the affected area on the parcel for the good of the adjacent property owners.
Do I have a second, please? That was Commissioner Millies to have a second.
And move, what did he say?
What's the finding?
You have to move.
Have to move it.
There you go. What did he say? What did he say?
Okay, call for the vote.
That's a thought provoker.
Everyone voted yes except for Steve. He had to abstain, so motion carried. So moving on to item five B, a special use permit PSP two-zero-dash-zero-four. And we have April Hill as our staff person giving us a report.
Good morning, Chairman Whitlock and Commissioners. I'm April Hill, Tolaria County Planning, Planner Three. Gilbert Guerrero has applied for a special use permit to authorize a commercial kennel for commercial breeding, boarding, training, and other commercial purposes. Up to twenty-five miniature dachshunds will be housed on the site, and Mr. Guerrero has operated kennel since two thousand fifteen with a, with a animal services license and would now like to expand into breeding. The site is a one-point-seven-five acre portion of a two-point-five-six acre parcel located in the A forty zone outside any urban boundary. And specifically, it's on the northwest corner of Avenue three-sixty-six and Avenue one-thirty-two. It's about a mile east of State Route sixty-three. There's the hearing notification map. Public notice was published on September the thirtieth in the Sun Gazette and mailed to property owners about three, within three hundred feet of the site. We had three neighbors contacting me to express concerns about barking dogs, and a condition of approval is included to address the barking. The applicant provided these aerial shots showing the distance from the kennel runs and the nearest neighbor to the west, one-hundred-and-eighty-four feet. And the second shot shows distance from the kennels to a, the neighbor to the north, about two-hundred-and-forty-two feet. The site to the north is buffered by a, an orchard. And the neighbor to the west, the applicant put up a seven-foot wood fence to screen and minimize the noise problem. Another neighbor was concerned about, about water quality, kennel monitoring, water tests. The kennel will be, will be inspected by the Tolaria County Animal Services Division, and they've been, they're familiar with the site for having, having been a kennel. And I'll let the applicant speak to the practices on the site, but they do take care of the animal waste in a proper manner. The vicinity map shows the location of the property. Neither Public Works nor Caltrans recommended any conditions of approval. The applicant estimates about two daily trips from the kennel. Site is zoning E forty, requires an approved special use permit. Kennel ordinance was revised in May two thousand nineteen is, and a brief description of that on page two of the resolution. Orchards surround the properties. Property is subject to the Rural Value Lands Plan designated for Valley Ag, will not conflict with commercial ag, and property owner is required to sign a right-to-farm notice. Project is consistent with relevant policies of the Tolaria County general plan. Now, noise, it is in a noise corridor with normally acceptable noise levels up to seventy decibels, as is common in the ag area. Tractors may bring that noise, may get, may get up to that noise level. Tractors may bring that noise, may get up to that noise level. The aerial shows the site, which contains an owner-occupied, single-family residence, domestic well, septic system, dog runs and kennels, and perimeter fencing. As I said, a wood fence along the western boundary, a regular post and rail fence along the northern. Conditions of approval are included for, to limit the off-site noise levels if those, they are in excess of 65 decibels, and complaints are registered with the County Co-Compliance Division, the applicant shall erect a side obscuring fence to the north in addition to the one to the west. If the side obscuring fence does not reduce the noise, the applicant shall place bark collars on the, or devices approved by Tulare County Animal Control on the dogs that bark. And if the bark collars or devices do not reduce the barking noise, and complaints are still registered with planning co-compliance, the applicant shall remove the problematic dogs from the property. The site plan shows the house and the existing animal pens. The aerials that I showed, that I provided, that the applicant provided, show them a little more clearly. Dog pens are about 10 foot by 30 foot. Each of the lanes have shade covers over 10 feet in the back and about 3, 5 feet in the front. They're open in the middle. The applicant says that, reported that waste is hosed from the pens and disposed up into septic system. County Animal Services has inspected the site, requires that the animal, that the applicant follow revised animal ordinances and commercial kennel minimum standards, listed on their website. The applicant shall also complete a 2021 application for dog kennel permit and for breeding permits. Waste from the kennel operation shall be managed so as not to create a nuisance or vector conditions on the site, vectors including fleas.
This exhibit you have, April, can you tell us what all these little squares are? I'm guessing 132, there's a, are those additional kennels? There's one, two, three, four, five. Or you want me to ask the applicant? I can't read this, so.
Wouldn't, there's a fence along there. The T, I think, refers to fence.
But there's a bunch of squares.
Sometimes you have to isolate.
I'll ask Mr. Guerrero to explain when he comes up. So I'll just finish my presentation first. Thank you.
Thank you.
April, question. How long has this operation been in existence? Five years?
Five years.
Do we have any complaints on file from the neighbors up to this point in time?
No, I consulted co-compliance at the time.
Okay, thank you.
There's a complaint in the packet, though.
Recent.
Okay.
I doubt the public notices, and the neighbors contacted us.
Go ahead and finish.
County Fire requires the applicant to provide access to all structures, address, post, address numbers, knox box with gate keys, vegetation clearance. Project will not have a significant effect on the environment, has been determined to be categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, consistent with state SEQA guidelines for Section 15301 for existing facility. The ground on the 2.56 acre parcel has been previously disturbed by residential use for more than three decades. Kennel began in 2015. Only one additional structure is proposed. Operations must comply with a both state and local regulations. It's not located in an environmentally sensitive area, will not require additional public services. Conditions of approval have been provided by environmental health, including animal services, fire department, and planning branch. That ends staff's presentation.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions of April? We can have her answer more after maybe the applicant testifies. So without all of the public comment, and invite anyone who wants to comment on this, including the owner, so it's your time to come up, give us your name and address for the record. Be gentle, I promise. Yes, you're getting close.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Gilberto Guerrero, and the address for the site?
Please, where you are.
The address is at 13164.
No, but where you live, what's your address?
That's my address. I live there, too. Avenue 336, Visalia, California. And I believe you had a question about my crude drawing. Sorry, art.
My site's not that good either, but I could see some are kennels, but then there were like about five.
Little boxes in the top left corner for it. That is an existing solar panel that was established there when we bought the house five years ago. There are 16 panels there. Tried to draw 16, but, and that is actually going to power our domestic well that was there. We were grandfathered into that system there because they no longer do that now for domestic wells. So that area is open. It is completely boxed in, contained, but no animals will be there.
Along the avenue.
Along the avenue there, I.
Those boxes.
Are those trees?
They are trees, yes. There are five boxes there. We have some Fresno ash trees that we planted in the pasture there to provide more shade for our cows and goats that are there.
Okay. So keep going. How many animals do you have?
Right now, we have 13 at this time. We don't plan to expand. That's about what we have had in the past here with a fluctuation, one or two. But we don't necessarily want to expand those numbers there, just because we feel like anything excessive, we start to lose our time and our quality we can actually give to them. But our move to get us here is basically to become legal and to have all of the proper documentations and stuff done, so that this is something that we can pursue without necessarily having to worry about doing something illegal.
Warding animals? Are you training them? Training?
We're training them. We have them there. We do want to reach into the breeding program there, so that I don't necessarily have to go to work. My arthritis is getting bad, and daily commutes and stuff there just kind of keeps it to where I can walk to the back.
Are these bird dogs?
Yeah, yeah, these are our dogs, yes. So we don't have anybody there. Occasionally, my mother-in-law, if she wants to go out of town, she wants to leave the dog with us and stuff, we'll just kind of keep her in the house with us, but that's about it.
Just to clarify the question, are these bird dogs?
No, they're not bird dogs. No, they're our miniature dachshunds.
Yeah.
Dachshunds?
Yes, all mini dachshunds. I do have one Doberman that's up front, but he's not part of the breeding program. I would never put those two together. So, but he's our family dog. His name is Negan. He's AKC Good Citizen. We got 18 weeks of training with him, just because I didn't want a big dog like that without having some control with him. My kids love him.
That's fear of the walking dead. He was a bad guy.
Yep, he was, yep. Yep, and everybody loves him. That's his registered name. Everyone loves Negan. But he's up there just as a deterrent, because I used to have people stopping the property up front and just kind of like hang out way too much. I know there's a stop sign at the corner there, but it made me kind of nervous that they would stop 200 feet before the stop sign and just kind of hang out. So since I had him up there now, and he got to full size, not many people stopped there anymore, so it makes me feel safer for my family. We have multiple fences along the property with gates that stay latched to make sure animals do not get out from their areas, from their containments and stuff that we have there, just so that they do not become a nuisance. Negan, especially, he has the most direct access to outside the property line here. We put a proximity collar on him that was marked at the gates, so that he knows now longer to not approach and go past those gates when they're open. So he's a smart dog. He learned pretty quick. But going into the back of the property there, it is all gated. He is completely separated from the other dogs by a metal pipe with a two-by-four horse panel gates that are set in there. They stop tractors. My father-in-law tested that on our wedding night. Ran his tractor into the gate, and the fences stopped it. And he was digging out. So they're good gates, they're good fences. Any other questions? I'm not quite sure exactly what I'm trying to say here.
I'll ask the commission. Any of you like to ask questions? Maria?
One of the conditions of approval is that the noise level be below 65 decibels. Is that achievable with these dogs?
Far as I know, no one has ever come to me with a complaint. And like I said, we're not trying to expand to something huge here. We just want to kind of keep what we have and just kind of turn it into a breeding program from there. But I was telling April right now, something came out there, coyotes were out there again, the dogs got out, not out, they got to barking and stuff, and some car drove by there, and while I was outside my front yard, I couldn't hear the dogs over the car drive by. So, I mean, I didn't have a meter with me to exactly assess the actual decibels and stuff, but it has never really been brought to me directly by any of my neighbors that we were the source of this noise nuisance. But we got to sleep, too. So obviously, I don't want to be kept up with the noise either myself. So I'm very much aware of that being a possibility, and I know if my wife doesn't get sleep, that makes it for a rough day for me.
Maria?
I have a number of questions.
Sure.
Mostly because I haven't, well, not mostly, but partly because I haven't seen pictures of the kennels and how they are. I know that certain things will be decided by other agencies.
Yeah.
But because it's within our purview or power to decide how many animals and what other conditions might be attached, I have these questions that I need answered.
Yeah.
So what are the kennel structures like?
They are 10 by 30 in approximate dimensions. They are made with the same pipe and wire material that our gate fences are. So it's the spent oil piping, two and seven eights or something like that. And then the two-by-four horse panels were welded onto them, so that they were sound, and no one can either dig in or dig out. My main concern with that was coyotes. Previously to moving to that place, we talked with the previous owners, they had lambs there, and it was a constant nuisance for them to have lost lambs that were being dug out by coyotes and dragged over into the property, into the north, into the orange orchard. So I wanted to kind of prevent that from happening as much as I can, and so we kind of overkilled with that. I know miniature dachshunds are kind of tenacious, but I don't think they can get through pipe fins and metal piping. As for shading covering, there is a center lane that you can see through the aerials there, the main long one in the middle. This is actually what I would call the center. All the doors into the adjacent runs open there, so that there is covering that covers them. Their food and water is placed underneath that covering inside the gates. They're all on automatic watering systems that are run by a float. Their feeders are about 20, 25 pound automatic feeders that we keep topped off and making sure that they're all full. And then the back halves, the back halves of the runs are the left and right side there that are also covered in plywood. It's approximately 10 feet wide. They are approximately seven and a half feet tall, just to kind of give kind of shade and shelter. As one of the animal control officers had told me, he goes, so if your dog decides to lay in the middle of the sun in the summertime, it's not your fault. You gave him adequate options for shade on either side. So that is the structure there for it.
What about the winter?
The winter, the back runs there, they do have power provided there, so I would be able to hang heat lights if need be, and put up additional walls if need be in there temporarily just to contain heat. Dog houses are also on the docket to be brought in should they need them. It's just they never stay in there, and the straw and stuff that we put in there, they would kind of kick it out and dig it out, and then it would just become a god-awful ugly mess that would smell. So we've been trying to minimize smell, noise, and everything else like that.
How many times a year do you plan to breed the animals?
About once a year for each female, and then probably change every other year, just so that they get a rest.
Okay. So there are a couple statements that you made that I wanted to bring up, because, again, to limiting the number of animals there. The regulations allow up to 25, 5 to 25 for a commercial kennel. You said that you have approximately 13 dogs, because that's all you can effectively give your time to.
Well, that's, yeah.
So I heard that. I heard that you also have one dog already in front who is part of the family, whereas these would be part of the breeding program. So do you have any concerns of if I make a recommendation that we limit you to the 13 dogs?
Do you want to breed puppies, too?
We would like to have puppies and stuff, and so.
Adult dogs.
The only thing that I would, that we were kind of talking about, my wife and I, was that there may be one or two combinations that kind of come out for the breeding program, either for color or markings or traits and stuff, that we would want to be able to keep. We would like to be able to have some kind of flexibility to do that, nothing to go excessive.
So you mean, keep the puppies?
Yeah, keep the puppy to add into a breeding program. So say, say we get a pair that the puppy comes out, and it has, you know, different markings, different eyes, something that's very desirable. We'd like to be able to have some kind of option to be able to keep that without having to try and sell one to be limited to a hard number.
So what would be, what would make the difference between, I'm trying to formulate this in a way that's not clear just to me, but, so you have the 13 dogs, or approximately 13 dogs. What concerns you about being able to give them your full attention?
Well, I've, for all intensive purposes, I don't want to feel like it's a puppy mill. I don't want people to get that impression that it's a puppy mill to where we can't even give the names, and we can't even, we can't even talk to you about the dogs. So I talked to animal control when they came out there one time, and he said he just got back from inspecting the property, who had over 100 dogs there. And that just blew my mind. I'm like, how can you even know these dogs? How can you even know what's going on there with 100 dogs? I don't want to get excessive. I don't want to go crazy with it, but I would like to have some flexibility to kind of do that and add one or two on if need be.
How many do you have now?
About 13.
Five years that you've been there, have you had 15, 16?
No.
Hasn't gone over 13?
No, it hasn't gone up, hasn't gone, it has not gone up or down, so.
And I appreciate that you're not wanting to turn this into a puppy mill, but if you have 13 now, plus your one Doby in front, he still would technically count, I believe, right?
I think we had this question when we were doing the ordinance itself, and from animal, from HHSA's side, it was not necessarily counted as part of the breeding program. They do give you a break on your own existing.
He doesn't count as part of the commercial?
As part of the commercial.
Since the operation, correct?
I mean, it's like.
Do you have a license?
Non-commercial kennel license, and he gets included with that there through animal control, just because they want to know all the actual dogs on the property, but not for the breeding program, though.
And Aaron, can you remind me, because this one, I couldn't figure out 100%, what the inspection procedures are for a commercial kennel?
As far as what animal control does, I mean, as far as going, I can't remember the amount of times they go per year, just once. And basically, they would, yeah, they documented the site and make sure it's clean and everything else. I mean, it's not, make sure it's not exceeding the numbers they allow. And I just wanted to make that point, that when we went through this ordinance change, the numbers were allowed to be much higher. And so this is really, at 25, this is a huge limitation on to what was going on before as a practice, and because of the puppy mill concerns at the time. So, you know, 25 was what they came up with, and, I mean, to try to limit that even further, I don't know if that would be necessarily fair unless we had a sound reason to do so. And, you know, as far as the acreage and everything else, and this is a use permit, there's obviously adequate acreage as far as HHSA was concerned. So I just, we may be running into some unsolid ground if we try to limit it to 13.
No, this is why, this is why I asked him.
Right.
If he's okay with that, because, again, I'm focusing back on the statement of, you know, this is about all we can handle, and I'm paraphrasing it there.
No, and I understand that. And we do hold applicants to their own operational statements when they make them, as far as timing and everything else, so, I mean, if they're. So, I mean, if the applicant's okay with that, then we can put that in there. The only thing is, like the applicant said, if they do exceed that 13 number, they just don't want to get caught in a situation where there is a noise complaint and they got 15. So, the, I mean, I would agree that there could be some limitation in here, self-imposed limitation, but I would just tread cautiously in that direction.
So, what, okay, so you have 13, Doby's not counting, Negan, right? So, if we said, let's, because you're thinking of maybe one or two with your current facilities, what if we said 15, and let's say, if there were a need to increase that number, you could come back, and we would again look at what your facility plans are and things like that?
And it could even be a minor modification at that point.
Aaron, I just have a question. Out of consistency, the ordinance is at 25, everyone else is at that level. I think we're being a little restrictive here.
Yeah.
For reasons of...
Keep it around number.
We don't need reasons to be more restrictive, I guess.
The ordinance is maximum 25, but according to the way I understand what our facility or obligations or power is, we can restrict that.
Oh, I know, I'm not saying that we cannot, but I'm trying to be consistent with the ordinance and not put some undue restrictions on without evidence of that being necessary. That's just my...
Why can't we keep it around number? I mean, let's make it 15 or 20. I mean, this is silly. We don't need to, we don't need to be so granular that this is... I don't get the impression that this applicant's going to break the rules there. That's what I'm saying.
Well, and if the concern is noise, I mean, the conditions in here, these are a little bit different than what we've had historically as far as the ability to go in and even remove animals if they are making too much noise. So, that's, I think this, the conditions of approval might cover the noise concern more so than we have historically.
Well, Aaron, it's beyond, and I'm looking up this at the same time as I'm talking, so, you know, two things at once, but it's beyond noise for me, you know, because I have a personal interest in animals. But, and I understand, because just FYI to the applicant, I have ranching family in the background. So, and I've said this before, so I understand the care and I understand the need to make a living, and I understand all that. But I'm looking at, you know, the code publishing that I looked up, 407-1150 under findings. It's under section B or paragraph B, or, sorry, I don't know my legal term on that. But it says, "The county of Tulare has a compelling interest in protecting animal welfare and maintaining minimal standards of animal care." So, I'm reading that maybe very broadly, but I, again, referring back to the applicant's statement that they have so much to give to the animals. They're self-limiting themselves, so I'm playing off of that. And if he has currently 13 dogs, plus the Doby, which is not counting as part of this program, and he wants to keep one or two more, I think it's probably fair to say, you know, to Commissioner Millie's point of, you know, a nice round number. If we said 15, that gives us an opportunity to look back at if he wants to make more than minor changes. You know, what is in the best interest of the animal in the interest, or the animals in the interest of Tulare County protecting them?
And that is well put, but I think at the same time, the Board of Supervisors, when they approved the ordinance itself, had those same things in mind. And this was brought forward by Health and Human Services Animal Division, so they also had those same interests in mind, and that's the number. And they also actually have a committee themselves that helped. It was with their committee for a little, a couple of years there before we kind of came to these numbers. So, I mean, there's, I, there was a lot of thought put into this, and this planning commission heard that as a recommendation as it was going through the process. So, maybe there's a little bit more experience here. But, yeah, you don't want to get into horse trading without more solid ground as to why we would do that, especially if the, but if the applicant is willing to limit themselves, that's up to them. But, again, without a good background reason to do it, and we do appreciate some of the concerns here, but they aren't necessarily in the record besides the noise itself. So, in these conditions, like I said, all the way up to actually removing the dogs who are making too much noise is a little bit new, new to us, but animal control is also going to be involved. So, I'd like to say the commissioner could be rest assured that animal control has this covered, and so did the Board of Supervisors when they approved this legislation.
I personally would not agree to limit beyond the 25.
I wouldn't support that motion either.
I feel comfortable in keeping it 25. That's what the Board of Supervisors established, and seems like we're making new rules.
Everyone else is on the same rules and on that. We can't go site to site and start deciding what the numbers are on this thing here, lest we have...
We do with permits all the time.
Lest we have compelling reasons.
How many pens do you have?
I have 13 pens.
Right?
At this time here, I'm, like I said, I'm kind of a little nervous and intimidated here, but kind of hearing where you were going off of and stuff. I, my statements that I made were in to specifically, specifically address not for the best interest for the animals. I don't want to have, I kind of feel like I get kind of judged by what I just said right now for not being able to know my own limits to what I can actually give to these dogs and give to them here. I don't want to necessarily have a hard limit put on me except for what the permit was actually established for, knowing that I myself could actually say, "Hey, this is going to work. We can still have room for this one here. The permit allows for us up to 25," which is definitely new, because when I first looked into this several years ago, I think it was up to like 100 or something like that, or more. Obviously, I don't want to go that far, but I don't necessarily want to cause neglect. And if I do, then I will make my own personal changes regarding that there so that the animals are taken care of. We do have vet visits here. There is a mobile vet who has been to our property, who comes in and looks at the animals and takes care of them. We do have a good working relationship there with Redwood Veterinary that we do take our animals there if they need to be seen. My wife and her family are third generation beef cattle ranchers. Animal care has always been there. Family vacations have been cut short because of animals and welfare and stuff like that. So, I would feel that me and myself, my wife, and our family would be able to self-impose our own limits within the given permit that is there just so that they can be taken care of.
Okay, I have another question for Aaron. I might have one more for you, but, so he has 13 pens right now, or kennels. If he adds more to accommodate more dogs, is that an additional permit, or is that a minor modification?
The pens themselves would not trigger any more additional entitlements. He's allowed to have as many dogs as the ordinance allows per kennel itself. So, if it's two dogs in one kennel, then he can have up to 25. I mean, that's the limit. So, at a comfortable rate of one per pen, then that's what he's got. You know, if he exceeds that density, if the ordinance allows it, then so be it. So, there's real no limiting factor there.
Aaron, isn't, correct me if I'm wrong, code enforcement is the parody check here, right? In terms of whether he's violating or not violating the ordinance?
Usually, obviously, barking from the nuisance.
What about the number of animals?
The number of animals, that's HHSA. That's not, that's not building code enforcement. So, that's not something we inspect.
Does he get checked periodically on the number?
Once a year. Once a year, he'll be inspecting.
Okay, so that basically is the check on whether he's abusing the number, right?
The other check is on noise itself. If the noise is exceptional, then we could be called in to do an inspection as well, so...
We have a Knox box too.
There's two, what's that?
I said, we did put a Knox box in front of our gate with our gate code on there, so anybody who has access to those keys will be able to come into our property even without our consent or being there, just so that we can have kind of a clear way there with our gates and stuff there, because they are, they are gate codes, so...
I want you to understand, this commission is made up of seven private individuals. We're not elected, we're appointed, so we come from all different backgrounds. Our intent is not to intimidate you anyway, but one opinion doesn't necessarily mean that we all agree, so...
I think the intimidation factor comes from kind of the chairs and the building here, not from the individuals there.
I wish I could come down to your level, because I am at your level, okay? I understand your plight, so... It's 15, if it's 20, if it's 25, it's once a year, is that correct?
Right. Well, it's a better inspection rate over any of our other use permits, pretty much.
So, I'd recommend leaving it at 25. And I agree with you, Wayne, because that's the ordinance, so... Okay, Maria, you got one more question?
No, I'm good.
Sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'm proud.
And by the way, we're all local people. You could find us, so... I'm not telling you my addresses, but I'm on the phone book. There are no more phone books.
You offered, you offered.
Point of information that Strathmore Kennel had to put, find ways to limit the noise in a community. And that's where I got that condition.
Right, right.
Okay, we're ready for your recommendation. And by the way, I did close the public comment.
Staff recommends that your commission approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14, California Code Regulation, Section 15301 pertaining to existing facilities, and conditionally approve special use permit PSP 20042 as drafted.
So, do I have a motion on that, please? Wayne?
Go ahead, Gil.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14, California Code Regulations, Section 15301 pertaining to existing facilities, and conditionally approve special use permit number PSP 20-042.
Do we have a second, please?
Wayne, Millie, it's all second.
Vote? Motion carried. Enjoy your kennel. Okay. Moving right on, we'll go to the director's report.
Yes, commissioners, I am Mayor Bach. I'm the planning director for the Resource Management Agency, and I don't really have too much to report. Just generally trying to work around this whole COVID thing while working around inspectors up doing inspections for the fire. It's been a little bit difficult over the last couple of weeks. And, but we're making it through, and hopefully, when we come out the other end of these things, we're a little bit more efficient and have a little bit better game plan in case we get into a situation like this again, which sounds like it's going to happen more and more. So, I think there's a huge effort on the county's part right now to familiarize ourselves with all the things we need to do, and including working on an ordinance right now to potentially allow people to live in recreational vehicles while they are fixing their homes up in the future. So, that's, that'll be a big change for us, and hopefully, we get that done and wrapped up here quickly, because we do understand how much people do want to go back up there and begin to rehabilitate their facilities.
Does that ordinance address any kind of new construction, or just something that's affected by a disaster?
Generally, we want to limit it to, the thoughts are that you probably limit it to what's affected by the disaster, because you don't want to... We get a lot of questions from people who want to live in sea trains or people who do want to live in recreational vehicles. And it's a little bit tough, because the Public Health Code of California doesn't necessarily allow that, and to make sure that even under our own police powers, that we don't go too far in protecting the public health by allowing carte blanche. Because it is, and it's really tough to describe how often we get asked.
Well, the situation I'm seeing in Three Rivers is that people want to bring in tiny homes, and they're told that if they keep them as a movable place in the proper zoning, they can have them, but if they have them as a primary residence on the parcel, then the building inspector won't approve that because they weren't in on the construction of the actual tiny home. So, we need some clarification there, for sure.
Well, just, yeah, generally, tiny homes on wheels that are movable, that don't fit HCD's definition for modular and/or mobile homes are not allowed. The Public Health Code says if it's, can move, it's still considered a recreational, almost in line with a recreational vehicle. So, you got to basically, like you do for any single wide or double wide trailer, you got to take the wheels off and you got to get it approved by HCD. So, it's a much different equation. We do obviously allow, we have mobile home parks. We have, again, regulated by HCD, and we do have the recreational vehicle camping parks too, which also raises concerns about, you know, how long people are staying there. But regardless, the ordinance we have would address those issues specifically. And, again, it's only for properties that are impacted by the fire itself. So, that's kind of what we're looking at generally. And this would be an urgency ordinance, so I think it would go straight to the Board of Supervisors, but just kind of giving you a little bit of a heads up of what's coming down for the, as far as what RMA can do through this process. And honestly, I mean, there is, you know, we're on two to three phone calls a day, and we're getting trained right now for FEMA for the next two days. So, we're spending a lot of resources, just making sure that no question is turned away or doesn't get answered. And we even have people up there all weekend long answering phones or being available to answer any questions anybody has. Outside of that, we keep pressing forward on our general plan updates, and we're working hard to get out to the communities for more complete streets programs. We just received another Caltrans grant for complete streets. So, hopefully, by the end of this year, every community will begin to have a complete street program in place. This will be our last eight of them. And, again, there's other things we have to work with, adaptation and resiliency into our general plan. And it's supposed to be in place by 2022, so we're working pretty hard to get that in there as well. So, we do miss Mr. Dave Bryant, but hopefully, we will be able to get those things done timely enough and get enough input from the communities and the people up in those communities in the mountains that we have a meaningful, meaningful document.
Did Dave retire?
Yeah, he did his retirement here.
Was he there?
Yeah, you were there.
I remember now, sure.
So, anyway, again, it goes to the whole point, doing more with less, and then to have a couple of other, you know, things thrown out there like COVID. And this fire right now makes it a little bit more difficult, but we're managing, and... and, uh, I do attribute that to all of our professionalism and, uh, the work ethic of, uh, RMA to, to stay on top of this, and the, the county as a whole, so. It's pretty impressive to watch.
As the county, uh, Aaron, all of the discussion about not doing good forestry management, is, is the county gonna look at that, or has the governor said anything about the remaining forests in our districts? Uh, are they going to be managed to remove and prevent, um, or, you know, because that seemed to be one of the major deals when all these fires were going on, or they still are, but. What, what's going on there? Do you have any idea?
Well, and I, I hear it from our board members who are involved in these meetings, uh, with the National Parks and National Forests, as far as, you know, their concerns, and, um, there is, yeah, for the last couple of years, we've been, especially with the tree mortality task force, and, uh, there are efforts in discussions about what that looks like. Um, I don't think there's any hard, good answers yet. Um, a- as far as the county itself, uh, you know, our Balch Park gets lumped in with our other parks as far as funding. Uh, so that's something that I think policy-wise, uh, the county is going to, to look at, um, but the, the better question is where, where's the funding gonna come from, and on top of that, uh, you know, National Forests, National Parks, um.
The majority are federal, federal lands, right?
Federal lands who have the majority of this and limited populations, you know, so it's, it's, it's a big policy decision at the federal level, and I think it's gotta, kinda trickle down to the state and the county level, because without that heavy, uh, funding or, or drive from the, the federal legislator, legislature, um, it's really, uh, limiting on our part, because we are, like, like I said, doing, uh, doing more with a lot less, so, um, we, we've had our road crews, you know, helping with the tree removal and everything else, so it's, it's, it, and again, with the Parks Department under General Services, you have Balch Park lumped in with Mooney and all these other parks, so it's, they're all grant-funded, driven. So where does that money come from? So those, those are the things that do need to be addressed, and I, I want to begin to address them a, a little bit at, as a policy level through adaptation and resiliency, and I think that's what the state is going to require us to do in order to continue to be eligible for, um, funding, including emergency funding, and that, that's the whole idea behind the legislation, uh, that requiring adaptation and resiliency being your, your safety element.
They're not letting this fire burn now, I can tell you that.
So the, I, I, I don't know if you remember with the, the Pier Fire, how long after that burned into the, the National Park and, um, it months, you know? Uh, so yeah, it's, it, I mean, we want them to remove the brush and the dead trees and everything else, and this is one way the, the, this is one way that, policy-wise, the, the parks and the, uh, USDA would allow that, uh, to happen. That's one way to do it.
If you look carefully at this fire, and we are, in fact, in Three Rivers, we're sitting right on top of this, the biggest part of this is federally owned land, is where this fire started, and where it continued and got out of control in the first place. And the, the big comparison here is the Forest Service land as compared to the National Park land. The National Park gets some of the funding to do the forest management. The Forest Service gets nothing, very little. And so this fire got totally out of control on Forest Service land, and the big problem is, you know, we're, we're being told that we're not managing the forest correctly, and that's true, we're not. But the biggest part of this is a federal responsibility, as much as they wanna admit that it's not, it is. And what I see in, um, this fire right now, the only way we're gonna stop this fire ultimately is because we have managed the park. It never stopped through the forest, and the forest over the years has allowed a lot of these home communities, and there's a lot of privately-owned forests, too. And that was what was decimated in this fire, is the park that really has a relationship with the Forest Service. The National Park, not so much. You know, they, in 2015, that's where the rough fire stopped, too, was at Grant Grove, because they had done prescribed burning. They don't do that on the National Forest at, very much at all, and so they can't stop the fire in the National Forest. It just rages wherever it wants to go. Tulare County is fortunate, even when you look at the Creek Fire, it's the same situation. The only thing that saved Shaver Lake was that SCE had done a concerted program around that community as a, you know, private entity to burn and manage those forests. Until we get the federal government behind this, we're SOL. This happens every year.
A multi, a multi-administration issue over the years. You know, the states can say, hey, we need some help to do this. I don't hear that coming from the states, and the feds sit there and they don't do anything, because they're not, they're not motivated to do anything. So, uh, I think both sides, shame on both sides.
When it falls onto Mother Nature, and then you can't fool her forever.
No.
She sends in a drought and stresses the trees, then she sends the bark beetles in and kills the trees, then the trees dry out, she sends the fire in and cleans the slate, and hopefully, we can do better the next time.
Well, a- again, that's, um, some of the things that we hope we can achieve through the general plan as far as what we're going to do, um, and put those goals and objectives and policies in place, and the state's doing that, um, through adaptation and resiliency. Like, like I told this commission, it's, uh, there was a project in Oxnard that got denied because Ventura, Ventura County had not updated their general plan in regards to adaptation and resiliency. I don't know what a housing project in Oxnard has anything to do with that, but, you know, it's your general plan. So the general plan's, um, what the state's trying to focus on, and from that, they'll be able to feed, feed money, uh, and, and be able to allocate resources. Everybody always says, we're tired of the planning grants. We want some real construction funding or real implementation money, but, uh, you know, unless you have those things in place, you're, you're not gonna be eligible for it. So, I mean, as far as what we can do on the planning side, that's, that's where I think our efforts are best served. Um, and we're definitely, uh, trying to help, uh, OES out as far as with the local hazard mitigation plan itself, and updating that to, to match our climate action plan and our adaptation and resiliency, even though it seems a little lofty. Um, I think that's where the, uh, beginning of that discussion that we're talking about right now occurs. Um, you know, and, you know, thinking back to my law school days, my administrative law school days, I mean, you look at the creation of the Department of the Interior and USDA running Forest Service, uh, silviculture, you know, was the main driver in the forest. So, you know, then with the environmentals who come into place, now they have to do these big plans, and those plans are NEPA-driven, so they cost a lot of money, and, um, it, it really, uh, you're, you're, you're adding, added bureaucracy on top of a very bureaucratic process already with the silviculture, so, you know, I think, uh, the pendulum swings pretty far both ways, and when they said no more clearcutting, uh, that also meant, uh, n- no more, uh, healthy management practices, so.
Yeah, but that's, that's a bunch of bunk. If you look at the state of Oregon, they've logged that whole state, and they're a mess. I can tell you.
Well, I'm just saying, the pendulum swings the other way, so I think, uh, uh, the Department of Forestry wasn't really doing those work. Private, uh, clearcutters, silviculturists were, were doing the work, um, and now you're asking them, um, which they never really were in the business of doing, uh, to, to do maintenance on their, their facilities. So it's, I, I'm just saying, we, when you look back at why parks are probably doing a better job, it, it, look, look who's running it, you know, so. Um, but yes, moving forward, I, again, I hope our general plan can address as many of these concerns. And, and the planning commission, uh, you, you'll be hearing this as it comes through here, so, uh, yeah. Remember these conversations and remember, uh, hopefully, we all remember this when that, that comes, comes through here.
Well, there's two things we need to do, and one of them is, as planners, we need to harden our homes and the construction of new homes especially, and we also need to beef up CAL FIRE as much as we can, because CAL FIRE is the structure protection in all these fires. So we got two challenges right there that we can do and work on immediately. The forest management that's going on in the federal level, that's gonna take generations to fix that. There's no doubt about it. But on the local level, we can support CAL FIRE, and we can, as planners, we can make these homes more fire-resistant, and that's what we need to do. That's, uh, the basic things we can do right now.
You know, the X factor, though, are the, uh, the utilities, PG&E and Edison, mainly PG&E. They just, they're now scratching their heads again, wondering whether the latest fire up in the, the glass fire was caused by, that's the PUC. That's the state. So, you know, if, if you have, uh, towers that are arcing and causing fires, that's another factor. It's nothing to do with the federal government.
They're turning off the power today all over Northern California, so it's a mess. It really is.
Well, I think we're off, uh, the topic, so if there's, is there any new business for the good of the order?
You must have lost your interest.
Uh, I'm, I'm good. Uh, well, meeting adjourned.
Let's go.